Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Come on in. Tom, grab a chair. Good morning. Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for December 10th, 2024. If you're able, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Supervisor Hubbard, lead us this morning.
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no reason just for all.
Thank you, and it's great to see so many people in the audience today. Welcome. And I'd like to welcome our sixth member of the Board of Supervisors this morning, Ms. Adeline, who will be casting some votes as we go forward today. Kind of makes me think we need to talk more about childcare in this county. So we'll begin with reporting out from closed session.
Report out of closed session for today, December 10th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference at legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Stevens versus County Workers Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ 14722671. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference at legal counsel, re-existing litigation, FIPS versus County Workers Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ 18426687. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff announcements.
This is a time for county staff to provide updates for upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Lisa, good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Respect to members of the board, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Normally, I come to the board and I have wonderful news and everything's hunky-dory, but I do need to bring something to and awareness to our public's attention. Over the past several months, the Calaveras County Animal Services has received and responded to an elevated number of calls for unrestrained and roaming animals that place public health and safety at risk, along with the safety and welfare of pets and livestock. The calls for service have included CCAS animal service officers, or ASOs, responding to loose animals running at large which have been hit by cars, stray dogs that have mauled or killed livestock, aggressive dogs chasing and biting people, and other incidents. These incidents also put CCAS staff and responding officers at risk as the health and vaccination history of the animals are often unknown. Laws and ordinances have been in place and enforced to ensure that owned animals are confined to their property or kept on leash to maintain community safety and to protect the welfare of all humans and animals. So we're asking for our community's help. With the increased events, our resources are tied and they're challenged, as each incident must be investigated and giving continuity and credibility to all investigations to determine if further action needs to be taken. And of course, our primary concern is our community. You know, we love our animals, but we also love our humans. You know, we love our community, and we want to make sure that everybody's as protected as much as possible and that we're all doing our service to our community. So that's our primary goal and our concern. So we are committed to enhancing the health and welfare of our community, not only for our community, but for our domestic and livestock animals as well. And we are asking the community for support. If you see something, please say something. We are, we will bend over backwards to help our community out. And with everything that's been going on, we will continue to do so. Just over the past, last Thursday, as a matter of fact, we took in five stray dogs that were out roaming. And on Friday, we responded to several bites, bite reports. So we're asking for our community's help, you know, lock your gates, keep your dogs. And also, it's cold, too. So with this cold weather, you know, we'd like to make sure that our animals are kept nice and warm because they are part of our family. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Eric?
Good morning, Board. Just one quick one. Eric Holt, OES. OES will be hosting a town hall workshop for the Cosco Creek area, so Lock and Tenon Valley Springs for all residents. January 14th, 5:30 PM, Valley Springs Veterans Hall or Janey Memorial on Daphne Street. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Wendy?
Good morning, Board. Wendy All, Behavioral Health. And we just wanted to invite everyone to the open house holiday celebration spaghetti dinner and visit with Santa, music, crafts, and more. And it's hosted by the Children's Unit of Behavioral Health at the Met Friday, December 20th, 2024, from 4 to 6 PM. We do ask for reservations, but we won't turn anyone away. Please come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right. See, no further staff announcements? None online?
We have no online.
Very well. We'll move on to recognitions and acknowledgements, and I will pass the gavel to Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. Before we actually do the proclamation for the Albert Michelson Day, sorry. Before we actually do the proclamation for the Albert Michelson Day, I just wanted to let everybody know, and the consent agenda is a proclamation for five Centigenarians at Foothill. And Chair Garamandi and I will be there to give them their proclamations next Monday. So that'll be filmed, and I just wanted everybody to know that. So we're here today, and if I could just say a couple of quick words about this proclamation. It all started with an email from Doug Maudlin, and it's gone from being just an exhibit to being a movement. And it's very, very exciting to see everybody here today. I just wanted to thank Doug, who is, who was a chief engineer at Lawrence Livermore Laboratory for 14 years. We have Sunil Mahotra, who's actually a rocket scientist, John Adams, Marlene Bradford, and your brilliant work and donating all that time to make the beautiful sculpture that you do. And I wanted to thank the STEAM Advisory Council. I don't know if Dr. Randy Smarts here, Tom Hoskins from Vallecito School District, Jared Hungerford from CCOE, and Debbie Strand, you've been amazing. Julia Costello, I saw, Tony, and of course, Marita Callaway from CCF. CCF does so much great work. Thank you so much. They always say, I was talking to Stacy earlier, if you play tennis, play with people that are better than you. And it's been just a joy working with you all, and you make me feel a little bit smarter. I will mention, lastly, that we have a direct descendant of Albert Michelson here today, Peter Michelson, who is himself a professor of physics at Stanford University, who drove here to accept this award. The first two lines of his bio are his research in experimental and observational astrophysics with the current focus on observations of the high-energy universe with the Large Area Telescope on the Fermi Gamma Ray Space Telescope. I will continue because I don't understand the rest of it. But thank you for being here. So this is a proclamation establishing December 19th as Albert Abraham Michelson Day in Calaveras County. Whereas Albert Abraham Michelson, born December 19th, 1852, came to the town of Murphy's Camp in Calaveras County in the mid-1850s, where he lived with his family above his father's dry goods shop on Main Street near the Murphy's Hotel, and attended the original Murphy's Schoolhouse, where his extraordinary intellectual potential was recognized early by both his parents and his teachers. And whereas Albert Michelson embarked on a brilliant career, first serving with distinction in the US and later becoming a renowned professor of physics, contributing, pioneering advancements to the field. And whereas Albert Michelson became the first American to win the Nobel Prize in Physics, receiving the prestigious award in 1907 for his groundbreaking work, most notably his precise measurement of the speed of light, the invention of the Michelson infrometer, and his significant contributions to the field of spectromy, spectrometry, yes. And just to let you know that he was a very good friend and worked very closely with Albert Einstein. They were known as the two Alberts. And they played the violin together. They were great friends. And a lot of Einstein's theory of relativity is attributed to Albert Michelson, which I'll let those guys tell you about. Whereas Michelson's work provided key advancements in astronomical measurements, enabling the accurate determination of the size and composition of celestial bodies, with his innovations continuing to this day to serve as a foundational technique in modern science and astronomy. And whereas a plaque on Murphy's Main Street commemorates Michelson's residency in Murphy's, the plaque is not where he lived. Judy Marvin would kill me if I said that that's the truth. He actually grew up down by the Murphy's Hotel. It stands as a testament to his lasting impact on the region and his commitment to honoring excellence in education and scientific curiosity. And whereas the new Albertson-Michelson exhibit at the Angels Camp Museum has already been visited by over 400 schoolchildren, showing them that you can come from a rural area and go on to change the world. And whereas greater awareness of life and legacy of Albert Michelson will...
The program is here, and I'll say a few words about it facing your direction. So good morning, honorable members of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, esteemed guests and supporters. It's an honor to stand here today to witness the adoption of this important proclamation recognizing December 19th as Albert Abraham Michelson Day. Today, we honor not only an extraordinary man, but also the transformative power of curiosity, persistence, character, and intellectual achievement to inspire our students, parents, and educators. Establishing Michelson Day is not just a tribute to Albert's legacy, it's a powerful reminder to our community, especially our young people, that there is no limit to what our students can accomplish in their lives. Albert, the Albert Michelson Exhibit at the Angels Camp Museum has already inspired hundreds of schoolchildren, and the Albert Michelson Science Fair Awards have ignited the imagination of dozens of budding scientists in our country, in our counties, sorry. Today's proclamation is possible thanks to the collective effort and vision of many people. First, thanks to Peter Michelson, who, as Martin said, is professor of physics at Stanford University and a great grandnephew, I believe, of Albert, for your guidance and encouragement throughout our shared Michelson exhibit journey. And he's been involved since this was an idea. He encouraged us, he's shared family stories. I heard a new one last night. We can't go into it now, but anyway, it's a very rich history, and he's an amazing man, tremendously generous. And thanks for taking your time out of your busy schedule to come up here today, and also for helping us now and in the future to try to find ways, innovative ways, to make the ideas of physics and STEM in general, STEAM as we now call it, inspire our students. Heartfelt thanks go to Sunil Mahotra, and I hope he says a couple of words, for his leadership of our exhibit team, to our volunteers, many individual donors, and the sponsors, organizations, including the Angels Camp Museum and their staffs, who have generously contributed to these initiatives. As I said before, a lot goes into it, has gone into it, and I just want to at least acknowledge everybody. We're deeply grateful to the Angels Camp Museum, the Calaveras County Office of Education, Calaveras County Community Fund, Garrett Elliott Chocolate Company, the Angels Camp Museum Foundation, and last but not least, the Murphy's Old Timers Museum, who's been our partner in this from the very beginning. And to the Board of Supervisors, thank you for recognizing the impact of celebrating Michelson's legacy and ensuring that it will remain a source of inspiration for all of Calaveras County. Thank you.
Sunil, do you want to say something?
Hi. Thank you for giving me an opportunity. This has been a labor of love for many of us, for all of us who are here. We've been at it for two years, and this would not have been possible without the immense support of the community, in particular Martin here, both as the museum head of the museum and in general supporting our efforts. And as Martin said, it all started with an email, and here we are. Two years later, we're celebrating Albert Michelson, the first American to win the Nobel Prize in Physics, who grew up in our community. And we should all share in the honor of this great achievement of his. So our purpose, why Doug and I got involved in this in particular, is to encourage and make our kids enthusiastic about science, that they could grow up in a community like ours, and they have the same resources as anywhere in America. And we want to inspire and instill this passion and love for what science is all about. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to honor this great gentleman, and we're glad that Peter Michelson is here to witness this. Thank you.
Peter, would you like to say something?
Well, I just, I didn't prepare any remarks, and I'm not going to try to explain what you tried to explain. But I just want to thank everyone here. And when I first came here a few years ago for the opening of the exhibition at the Angels Camp Museum, my memory from that is that you have an incredible community here, and I really thank you all. It's an incredible community. So thanks very much.
Super, any other public comment?
Thank you. I first heard of Albert Michelson when I went into graduate school at Case Institute of Technology back in Cleveland in the early 60s. And he was very famous, folk hero figure around the university because he was, I think, the fifth faculty member hired right after the school was established. And that's where he met Morley, and they began working on the speed of light, which eventually led to his Nobel Prize, which first American to win a Nobel Prize in science of any kind, I think, physics especially. And so when I moved to Murphy's in 2010, I moved down the hill from snow country, and I was really excited to see the plaque in front of Hovey's Winery that said that Albert Michelson had actually lived here. And so I looked into that a bit, and I found in the Old Timers Museum that there was a little photograph of him in one of those eight-by-10 drugstore frames, photograph of him in a sheet of paper that described his life in Murphy's. And that eventually made its way to the storeroom in Martin's Museum here on Main Street in Angels Camp, and now is, I don't think that little photograph is part of the exhibit now, but that was sort of the catalyst for bringing that forward and making a full exhibit about it. And if you haven't visited that exhibit, I encourage you to. It's a wonderful description of what life was like in the 1850s in Calaveras and what Michelson accomplished in his life, and how he was able to get started here in such a small county, remote county. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Good morning. It's always nice to have a great event like this, a positive feel-good. I know not everything you guys get to do is positive feel-good. Tom Hoskins, I am superintendent for Vallecito Union School District. I am not a rocket scientist, but I do work in a career path where I try to inspire our youth to maybe be the next Albert Michelson or rocket scientist. So on behalf of Vallecito Union School District and our governing board, I do want to extend our full support of this proclamation to honor Albert Michelson, to make his birthday a day recognized across the county. Our district is really proud to have an elementary school named after Albert Michelson there in Murphy's. We serve students from Vallecito all the way up past Dorrington, along the upper part of Highway 4 corridor. And really, his namesake for our school, it's a legacy to the cornerstone of a basic commitment to curiosity, to discovery, to excellence in education. And by recognizing his birthday as a countywide day, it not only celebrates his remarkable individual feats, but also underscores the significance and importance of science achievement in our education and our community. So it's a great thing. We're fully behind it. And thank you for everybody who's been a part of bringing it to you today.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Perfect. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments.
No, no, no comments. Yeah, just, Ben, you want to make a motion?
Just, you know, the time Albert Michelson and Albert Einstein and those, my grandfather and other people were, you know, the esteems of leap and bounds in science during those times were amazing and set the foundation for where we're at today. So with that, I'll make a motion.
And I will second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, recognizing the enduring importance of the Albert Abraham Michelson's life, work, and legacy, hereby designates December 19th his birthday as Albert Abraham Michelson Day to celebrate his contributions to science, education, and inspiration for present and future generations of Calaveras County students. There are a lot of people who couldn't be here today that were a part of the exhibit as well, as well as a part of everything that's been done since we started the exhibit. And we'd like to ask everybody who's here today for the proclamation to come up. And that includes Bronte. Where are you, Bronte? I saw you earlier. There she is.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, let's settle down. Tom? Thank you. All right. If everybody could be seated, if everybody could be seated, we'll continue on with this meeting. All right. We're going to move on to general public comment. Madam clerk?
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Okay. I think everybody understands the drill for public comment. You have three minutes. If you are addressing an item that comes later on the agenda, I will politely ask you to stop and save your comments for that agenda item. And so if there are public comments on items not on the agenda, let's begin. Terry, take us on.
Good morning. Terry McBride, New California State Committee Chair and Senator, lifelong District 2 resident. We have the Select Committee of the coronavirus pandemic came out. I was nice, I didn't print up 575 pages for you guys. These are just an oversight of what they came up with. And the reason I want to bring this up is you were lied to by the government, by health officials. In some cases, perhaps they didn't know what they were a part of, but definitely were lied to and manipulated, and it violated Americans' citizens' rights, you know, our constitutional rights. And I imagine this kind of stuff may, could be happening again. I mean, right now, they say we have to have 27 days to be able to mail in our ballots and 27 days to count them all. And isn't it interesting that after the actual date of the election, which is supposed to be the Tuesday after the second Monday, as per the Constitution, one day, ID, all these have changed, and the votes change over time, and to one party. So, you know, you got to sit back and start looking at things and questioning. And unfortunately, all Board of Supervisors, not you guys, all city council, were motivated by funds coming into the county as supposed help. But the price that was paid, I, just real quick, because it's the citizens that pay the price on this. And this talks about the paycheck protection program that was resulting in at least $64 billion of taxpayer dollars lost to fraudsters and criminals, not people that needed it. And then also how a lot of that money, California was egregious in it, went to international organizations. The World Health Organization exaggerated the COVID-19 pandemic via pandemic treaty. You guys need be afraid of that. New California is standing up against it. We will not allow any of that in within the citizens of our state, which is happening. Social distancing was never proven, and Fauci actually admitted, sort of just appeared, there was no scientific data. What did that do to the children? And what did it do to people and businesses? So there's, because I don't have much time. This is going to come back. And I am asking our Board of Supervisors and supervisors everywhere to question the narrative and stand up for the citizens' rights. The rights of the Constitution have handed out almost 2,000 in this county since this happened. A lot more people know what their rights are. Look at the Ninth Amendment. It's a powerful one. And question, what's going on with the voting system? It's not our people. It's the machines. Our people are good. It's the machines and what they're doing within it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Budner?
My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. During the November 26th Board of Supervisors meeting, Supervisor Stopper was caught on video, recorded by Calaveras Public Access TV, engaging in text messaging on a mobile device multiple times while seated upon the dais during the general public comments portion of the agenda. Stoppers repeated texting throughout the meeting's agenda was construed as a potential violation of the Brown Act. A public records request was filed with Stopper, county council, and HR and risk management seeking all text messages initiated and received by Stopper during that meeting. In a particular... In a particularly egregious instance, Stopper appeared sufficiently engaged in texting for any observer to see that he was distractedly texting prior to the conclusion of a constituent's general public comment statement. I was the constituent to whom Stopper displayed a profound lack of respect. Stopper was rudely texting while being addressed by me, a constituent presenting damning facts concerning the state's scrutiny of his numerous Fair Political Practices Commission violations and the future viability as an elected official. Stopper's disrespect toward a constituent further demonstrates either his denial or his lack of self-awareness concerning his potential legal predicament with the FPPC for his numerous alleged violations of the Political Reform Act. The responsive document to my public records request confirmed that Stopper was exchanging text messages from the dais with one of his constituents seated in the audience. That constituent curiously had a personal financial interest and stood to gain benefit from the board's approval of Agenda Items 18 and 19 concerning the conversion of his family trust land from agriculture preserve to Williamson Act contract. Stopper had an ethical obligation to recuse himself from voting on those two agenda items due to his pre-existing relationship with his constituent and the appearance of conflict of interest. The responsive document received from the county council to my public records request further revealed that Stopper and his constituent had exchanged text messages during my general public comment. I'll share that exchange with you now. You have copies of this. Constituent texted the following, "Butner says you're done," with three exclamation points. Stopper texted in reply, "Yep, his beautiful dome glows so brilliantly." Seriously, Ben, you're an elected county supervisor. You're not some giggling little schoolgirl sneaking an exchange of slam notes with your crush about a classmate's appearance while the teacher is not looking. Your public behavior upon the dais violates decorum and demeans civility. Hopefully, you'll see the wisdom in stepping up to this podium right now and apologize to your colleagues seated upon the dais and to all of your constituents, myself included, for the disrespect you've demonstrated to your elected office. My name's Christopher Butner. I publish calaveras2026election.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment in the room? Board recognizes former supervisor, Marita Callaway. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, I can't stay, and I would like to comment on an agenda item. As an alumni, would you please give me that courtesy?
For you, Marita. I will make one exception in this eight-year service. Yes.
I'd like to comment on Agenda Item 32. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Marita.
Chair. Could you please come up?
You have three minutes, Marita.
Well, if you talk, then I have more. Okay. As all of you know, I'm not into plaques and sheets of paper with whereas's. So for you, Mr. Chair, I have a teacup with a frog on it because you brought your own frog and wanted the frog jump, and we know you put something in it. Mark Twain would have something to say. And books because you're a big supporter of the library. And inside is something else that reflects something that's ongoing and that we've had a lot of discussion about as we serve together on the dais. And you can open it and share it with your colleagues. No. No. Would you tell him?
Thank you, Marita. I appreciate it.
Well, come here. I just want to hit you one more time.
Thank you. I sat next to this lady for six years and finished my arm in your face.
Thank you, Jack.
All right. That was the one exception in eight years to the rule. We'll continue on. Is there other public item, public comment? Is there other public comment in the room? Board recognizes county poet laureate. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm actually the poet laureate Emerita. There's a new poet laureate for Calaveras County, the third one, and I'm so happy that we're able to have this position in our county. My last project took a little while to get printed, but I wanted to give each of you a copy of, oops, Calaveras Poets and Community Poems. So I made a call out for poets in Calaveras County, and they sent me poems, but I also did community poems. And I'd like to share a couple of those with you. These were where people gave me words or phrases or things that they appreciated about our county, and I just grabbed the words and put them together and to make a poem. District Two. This place, this life flows through me, sacred feeling, place of healing. Spring bursts as round-shouldered hills roll out, green rugs. We're lucky enough, mud on boots worth every emerging crystal. Spring, autumn beauty, nature's sounds. Rain sifts through cedars, dove's coo and oak's rivers echo. Summer, I am afraid, always brown, hot, hot winds blow until we are green again. We dreamers, schemers, breathe deeply, take in the smell of first rain. Grateful communion up in the mountains, back from the ashes where our roots grow deep. Our conscience filled with joy inside the brain, heart, and soul of tomorrow. This place, this life flows through me, sacred feeling, place of healing. And the contributors are in the book, too, people from the District Two who sent him things. There's one anonymous person. District Three. Morning, oh, I'm sorry, the title is lovely. Morning cracks open in an ecstatic ritual, cows grazing in the fields, big trees soar to the sky, friendly people with stories to tell, is one of kind grandeur. Bits of icy snow exploding spring, life of feast, our human roots unify, tumble, bloom everywhere. District Four. Peace in the foothills. Abandoned barns across oak-dotted hillsides, gold rush, oopsie, I got distracted by the light. Quiet, open views echoing in more relaxed pace where Mark Twain learned to mine gold from words, family names that still resound and echo, still breathe, and whisper history. So I want to give each of you a copy. And Martin, you're on page 17.
And Linda, thank you for all the work that you did with our community and the schools, and the poems that you put together from the community are beautiful.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, and it was a pleasure to pass it on to someone else.
Well, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment online?
There is no public comment online, and I just want to remember our online members, so please raise your hand if you do wish to make a public comment.
Okay. Three, two, one. Okay. Very well. We'll close public comment at this time, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Is there any member of the board, Board Supervisors, who'd like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any members of the public in the room that wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Item Six, Chair.
Item Six? Is there any other? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item number six.
I'll move the remainder.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli, seconded by Supervisor Follendorf. Call in favor?
Aye.
Carries five zero. We'll move on to item number six.
Item Six is the Minutes of Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting, November 26, 2024.
Mr. Butner, you had a question?
My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. I respectfully request that the meeting minutes of the November 26, 2024, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting be amended to reflect the following facts before being voted upon by the acceptance of the board. District Five Supervisor Benjamin Stopper was video-recorded text messaging on a mobile device on multiple occurrences while seated upon the dais, a potential violation of the Brown Act. It is corroborated by county council's responsive document to my public records request for all of District Five Supervisor Benjamin Stopper's digital communication during that meeting that District Five Supervisor Benjamin Stopper exchanged text messages with a constituent seated in the audience who had an Agenda Items 18 and 19 coming before the board for a vote during that meeting. Notably, the constituent had a significant personal financial interest in the outcome of the vote. District Five Supervisor Benjamin Stopper had an ethical obligation to recuse himself from voting due to his pre-existing relationship with this constituent, failing to recuse from the vote and failing to disclose his pre-existing relationship. District Five Supervisor Benjamin Stopper exhibited extraordinary disrespect for his constituents and colleagues, inclusive of his personal denigration of a constituent, me, with Stopper having stooped to a sardonic ad hominem attack about my shaved head, texting his constituent that his beautiful dome glows so brightly, brilliantly. One further point, Ben. In case you've been wondering about the status of my Open Fair Political Practices Commission complaint filed against you, number 09092024-02978, the FPPC Enforcement Division notified me yesterday in writing that the complaint I filed against you for your multiple violations of the Political Reform Act remains under review for opening of an investigation. My name's Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve item six? Or moved by Supervisor Follendorf?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Toffenelli. Call in favor?
Aye.
Carries five zero. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the regular agenda.
Item 24, Ordinance Building, Adopt and Ordinance Repealing Chapter 9.22, entitled Cannabis Background Clearance Badge from the Calaveras County Code and authorize a summary publication out the ordinance, find ordinance exempt from CECL.
Doug?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. As you are aware, November 12th, I brought this item and the item directly after this to your board for a waiving of the first reading. This one is the repeal of Chapter 9.22, Cannabis Background Clearance Badges.
Hang on a second, Doug. Is the microphone on?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, very good. I gotta start over. I lost my place.
I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding. Essentially, nothing has changed between November 12th and today. Just for edification, my comments at the last meeting were that we have, in your wisdom, very robust enforcement opportunities contained within the code without needing this, and that was actually demonstrated about a week after this, the first hearing. We did have a bad actor, and it resulted in five licenses being pulled for violations of this, of 1718 of the code. So as stated, we do have good enforcement options. There's no other information I can provide at this time. If you have any questions, ask time.
Thank you. Questions from the board? All right. Is there any, we'll move to public comment. Is there any public comment on item 24?
Good morning. Vicki Rangy. I just have a kind of a clarification question because when we were here on November 12th, I know in the agenda, it did say something about coming back in December 10th. But that day, the way the votes were taken, us, the public, believed that this must not be coming back, and they just, you just voted it through. So I guess in the future, if you could please let the public know what you're actually doing, that it was going to come back for the 10th. And I know that you've probably all made your minds up, but it is on the agenda. You could change your minds. I don't know how many people responded to you about the badge ordinance especially, and obviously, the next one, too, the taxes, because it doesn't seem fair to the public what you and guys are doing for an industry that shouldn't be here. So anyway, I just wanted to say that because I thought that was quite confusing. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morse?
Susan Morse. I'm here today to question and speak in opposition of the Building Department's request to repeal the badge ordinance. Why? Now, I wasn't able to come last time, so I'm going to say what I would have said then. The safety and well-being of the county's residents and families, in my opinion, has not been adequately considered. 1795-010, Purpose and Intent states, "It is the purpose and intent of this chapter to allow limited regulated cannabis cultivation and other commercial cannabis activities, the goal being to preserve the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Calaveras County and its environment while retaining the ability of cannabis consumers to have access to cannabis in the county." Chapter 9.22, its purpose and intent specifically says, "The purpose of this chapter is to reduce certain health and safety risks to law enforcement, civil enforcement officials, and public at large by preventing those individuals from owning or working at commercial cannabis businesses within the county who have a prior conviction or convictions." And these badges have been working, right? We've, that's been reported. Many of these issues that confronted residents in the past have reduced. So why would we eliminate one of their protections? The badge, the process is working. The submittal from the Building Department state, "It meets a Building Department strategic plan goal of streamlining permit processes for business, for all business." And if you look at the county's website, you will see that the Building Department has taken all different types of businesses and put them into one, making it even difficult if someone wanted to find how to make a complaint because it's all merged into one. The submittal from the, if it meets, it meets a Building Department strategic plan, okay. Question, does this meet the purpose, spirit, and intent of the 1795 ordinance and the 9.22 badge ordinance, repealing the badges? I urge you to reconsider your November vote. Please vote no today, and let's not forget the commitment the county made to its residents in May of 2021. The county is committed, quote, "to proper implementation and enforcement of the ordinance, the goal being to preserve the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Calaveras County and the environment." Please vote no. We consider this.
Thank you very much.
We want to be safe.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this item? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, which I had before on this. I would appeal to the other two supervisors that previously voted no on this to reconsider their vote from last time on November. This is the public safety item. This is something that is concerned for the other 45,000 constituents in this county and their safety. And there's a number of girls in my district specifically that are right next to suburbs and housing overlooking them. And their safety is something that I, I look at my job as preserving. And this ordinance is a safety ordinance and was established to do that. So I would hope the other supervisors would at least consider that. So I am going to vote no, as I did before on this item, because again, I think it is a safety issue, and that's the reason it was in place. There was a comment earlier in November that if something happens, we can revisit this. That's being reactive instead of proactive, and we're supposed to be proactive. Sometimes you have to be reactive because you don't know anything about something that may occur, but this we do know, and I think it's... may occur, but this we do know, and I think it's, it's, it's a good ordinance, and it was put in there for a reason. So, I, I appeal to the other two supervisors to please think about their vote and think about the safety of their constituents.
Thank you. Other comments or a motion from the board? Supervisor Hebert, your light's on.
Oh, thank you. I will say that, that I have been out to these grows and I have seen the people that have been working there, and I did vote against it to begin with, but after doing more research, speaking with Doug and the sheriff, I, I still will be backing this.
Do you want to make a motion?
Hey, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion, yeah.
Supervisor Stopper, did you want to make a statement?
I, I, I was, it looked like Ms. Faldor was really, say something.
Supervisor, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just was gonna, I, you turned your light on first, so I don't want to interrupt. Similar to Martin, I originally voted not to support this, but after doing research and going out to the grows, and I will be supporting staff's recommendation to, to these changes. And I did go in the last meeting in November in detail of more of why, but I will be up to, to support staff on this.
Hang on. Supervisor Stopper, did you?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that, that, for multiple reasons. First of all, the owners of the LLCs that own these and the, and the owners of the, all these types of businesses still have to go through a background check. So, so the person that is running the business is vetted. With that also, there's an issue with migrant workers to the point where, like seasonal, I would say seasonal, not so much migrant, but with seasonal workers and getting enough out there during certain times of the year for, with, for the, for, for the process to be implemented, and it, it becomes a hindrance. Yes, I think that safety is all of our, we are, we are all concerned about safety. At, at this point, I think that the owners take the brunt of the liability, because if they have an issue at that time, they're usually the ones that have to deal with it. It, it's, I think it's being more open to the process that we do with all businesses across, across the state, and, you know, with those, with, if it's not security or law enforcement, you know, we, this is a legal business across the state of California, and, and, you know, and it provides jobs to Calaveras County that are beneficial to the people that live here. So, with that, all, all, Martin did.
I did make a motion.
Oh, you did? Okay. Mars made a motion.
So, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Hebert, a second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Carries four one. Thank you. Item twenty-five?
Item twenty-five, Ordinance Building, Adopt an Uncodified Ordinance Reducing the Cannabis Cultivation Tax Rates, specified in section three point five six point zero five zero B one three by sixty percent through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, as authorized by section three point five six point zero seven zero and authorize summary publication requires a four-fifth vote.
Doug?
Once again, this is brought to your board, introduced November twelfth. The, once again, the, the, the subject really hasn't changed in the last couple of months. We are still floating around two hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars per pound, which is easily fifty percent or more, depending on the, the product, less than two thousand twenty. The sixty percent reduction is essentially unchanged. The only difference is we were asking to extend this for a three-year period rather than a one-year period. Gives us time to get additional market data, gives us time to see what the, the federal government is gonna do as far as whether or not they're going to allow interstate commerce or, or take it out of the schedules currently in. There's still a lot of potential market volatility, so at this time, I have really nothing further to add. If there's any questions, ask time.
Questions from the board? Supervisor Stopper?
Just to confirm, actuals, I just want to confirm that the numbers you have here for, for taxes collected, we, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, actuals, three point five five four six three four million dollars, so three million five hundred fifty-four thousand and some change.
Correct.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, three million six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and change.
Correct.
Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Now, that year reduces somewhat because we actually had some people move out of the business, so not as many, and some people reduced the size of their, of their, of their grows, per se, right?
Yeah, a lot happened in the market at that period, yes. There was a lot of downsizing of canopy size in addition to rotating businesses.
Right. So, the total collected for that year was two million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars and change.
Correct.
And this year, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, estimated to collect two point eight million dollars approximately.
That is.
Things proceed as.
That's the budgeted estimate, yes.
Yes, and, okay. Just, just to confirm that, you know, because some of the comments is, we've never seen any return on this, that I keep getting calls about, and I just say, first two actuals over seven million dollars, and then, so, we're, we're looking at, in four fiscal years, pretty much easily over twelve million dollars in returns. I add it up quickly, it's more than that, but, so, just want to confirm that.
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Other questions from the board? All right, I'll open this up for public comment. Public comment on this item? Shrinky?
Hi, Vicky Renkey. Yeah, I guess you're happy with that amount, and, yeah, it's some money, you're right, but remember what we were told? Oh, eleven million dollars a year, a year. That hasn't happened, and now you're reducing it down to two million maybe a year. So, I just wanted to bring that up. The other thing, and I'm gonna use this time to ask this question because it's been asked before and nobody ever comes back with an answer. I know this tax is based on canopy, but the state requires these growers to sell their products to a legal distributor. Otherwise, it's called black market. We have never, ever gotten a report on where this marijuana from Calaveras County gets sold and who to. And I have to say something right now about cartels. They are big in California, and I would imagine that they're here in Calaveras County, either buying the marijuana from our people because they can only get a hundred dollars for it or whatever. So, you know, please, don't make this a business like we're growing grapes or like we're growing tomatoes. This is a serious business, and in California, there's many reports, if you look it up, there's current reports about cartels running these marijuana businesses in California, and that's a concern to us as citizens. We don't want that in Calaveras County. We want a safe county. We don't want criminals here. So, that, I just wanted to bring that up, and the fact that you guys need to start looking at where this marijuana is being sold. I know we don't tax it on that in, in our county, but there's still a piece there that needs to be addressed. And also, the cost to do this program and how that's going and what we've spent on it in a comparison to the two point five or whatever we get a year. Thank you.
Other public comment on this item? Ms. Morse?
I'm here again to speak in opposition of the Building Department's request to reduce the cannabis tax by sixty percent through December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven. I have some questions. First question is, by what authority does the county have to expend otherwise or otherwise use county's resources in, based on the supplement, supplemental, submittal, excuse me, to conduct research into the state of marijuana industry market? Why are we doing that? Why are our taxes paying for this to be done? How do you justify the government's interference in the economic system for the benefit of one private industry and ignore the rest of the county, private sector? Agenda, submittal twenty-five states, the research conducted by the California County staff, staff indicated marijuana industry market prices may not stabilize. Why are we paying people to do this research? In submittal twenty-five, Mr. Oliver further stated, "The Calaveras County Building Department is concerned this industry will continue to need assistance in the form of tax reductions from our local government and recommends a tax reduction of sixty percent." Why does their business plight concern us, the California residents, Calaveras residents, the taxpayers, in all the other ways? Why? Because bottom line, Mr. Oliver, building department director, is recommending that this private sector business burden should be shifted to the forty-five thousand Calaveras County residents and that the residents should accept and compensate the financial burdens of a small group of eighty-nine, ninety, whatever, small group of private sector businesses. Finally, question to each of you, how do you justify this violation of your oath to protect and serve all of the residents, not just a group, but all of us in the county that elected you? Is it not your duty to protect and promote the public health, safety, and welfare of all of its citizens? I urge you to vote, that's basic, face-to-face, that each of the residents of Calaveras County are facing financial burdens. Basics, housing shortages, high rents, food prices, fuel expense, just to name a few. We all know about it, we hear it all the time. Are you prepared to reduce their financial burdens? Playing favorites for political gain, in my opinion, is plain and simple.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Morse.
Please vote no.
Thank you. Is there other public comment in the room on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
All right, I'll bring this back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
I have a. I would like to hear what Mr. Oliver has to say.
Just a couple of points of clarification. The, the cannabis program is not funded by general fund. I just want to make that clear. We have service or user fees for every applicant. Any activity that we take related to a cannabis cultivation site is, is billed, especially yearly, when we have our annual alterations or, or continuations of those permits. Anytime someone makes a change, there's a fee for that. We go through the review and there's a cost for that. So, there, in fact, the Building Department, the only general fund revenue that we ask the board for annually is for the code compliance program. And it, last year, we did ask for it in an emergency. Thankfully, we didn't have to draw that down, but we did authorize for Building Department inspection services not related to cannabis. So, at this time and moving forward, this department remains primarily funded by its user fees.
I, I would concur with Mr. Oliver. The permit fees are built into the program to fund this, so staff time is not taken from general fund or tax money from other things. So, that, and that, and that time, the cost of the entire program is built into that as we move forward. So, that, so the question on how much are the people paying for this program is, they aren't paying other than the people that are paying the permit fees to move forward and the other fees that, that, through, through the process. And then, just to add to, where, where does the product go? The state tracks and where the product goes, and to reciprocate that would be a, more of a burden and a cost to the county. So, if you have questions about where the, the product is being sold, that is a question for the state.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion?
I see a vote.
No.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hebert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose?
No.
Carries four one. Public comment is already called for that item. All right, we'll move on to item twenty-six.
Item twenty-six, Agreement OES. One, make a public benefit finding. Two, authorize the board chair to execute an amendment to agreement zero four seven zero two four zero five with Nate's Tree Service for Cosgrove Creek Vegetative Management increasing the contract amount by forty thousand dollars for a total amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars with a term from October eighth, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And three, approve budget transfer to the increase in expenditures in the OES budget by forty thousand dollars and reducing general fund contingencies by the same amount. Requires a four-fifth vote of the board.
Kirk?
Come on, word. Can we start with a smile? All right, I appreciate that. So, I've heard, we came October eighth, I believe it was, and asked for the hundred and five thousand dollars to do vegetative management in Cosgrove Creek, basically from Hogan Nam Road, just a little bit down from there, all the way down to basically the confluence of Calaveras River, all the vegetation. So, the permit has some delineation between basically two feet within the water or up the bank and that in to the middle of the street. So, the contract was originally just to do to the two-foot mark, to respect some of the endangered species habitat and kind of get through there. What we didn't know at the time was that the water was at a pretty high level for this time of year, and we did a lot of, trying to find out why that was. We had a little bit of rain, that didn't answer the question of why it was high. So, I think we've come up with that answer, but basically, we went back and got Nate's to give us a second quote to get into the water, to abide by all of the permitting requirements of decontamination and basically cut all those reeds that needed to be cut out of there to prevent any high flows this winter. So, I know that asking for forty thousand additional isn't a fun thing, but I think that is what will complete the job for this year. And to better prepare us for next year, as I announced in the staff announcements, we are going to do a town part of the new year so that we can get ahead of this, when our permit allows us to get back in there come May, when we bring it back. I think that was the target that we decided on back in October, was that the board wanted this back in, in May. So, we're gonna start first thing in January with a town hall, a workshop, idea sharing, getting experts to say, what's the best method and the cheapest method in years going forward, and hopefully to kind of have a multi-year plan for this. But this forty thousand additional will get us through this year in the proper manner that we need to.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli, or Supervisor Stopper?
I just, Eric, I appreciate you picking up the baton. I think OES is well-suited to start dealing with this, as you know, working, working with partners and agencies that are commonly, you commonly work with. So, I think that we have a better opportunity to address this in the future. This, this mitigates the problem, the issue. You know, if it rains so much, we can only do so much with removals. if it rains so much, we can only do so much with removal. So, you know, with supporting this to get it to the point where it needs to be, you know, I do want to say that keeping in mind in the future, what's a more permanent solve and coming up with plans for the future. I know Mr. Toffnelli, a lot of what I'm saying is what he's going to say, but, you know, I just, thank you, because this goes through both our districts. It was concerning to see the, after the point the job had gotten to, the foliage that was still in certain areas. I think that, you know, discussions with you, I think we figured out where some of the water was coming from.
Yeah, you know, that's strengthening of the partnerships. One of the special districts is preparing for their winter flow, and so they were lowering their ponds into the creek, which is their natural, it's the timing of these things and strengthening those partnerships, you know, and back to the permanent solution. We've submitted for $2 million in funding, hopefully, for a study on Cosgrove Creek and how we can do it. So there's options.
An environmental one, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is a multi-year thing. We're trying to stop what we would call the 10-year floodplain, basically. Anything above that, we're still going to have flooding. I don't want anybody to think that this solves exponentially high flows, like 100 or 1,000 year floodplain, but this is our best option to, on a normal year, stop any damages from happening.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Supervisor Toffnelli?
Yeah, Eric and Teresa, both of you, thank you for taking the time to walk the creek with me and finding out exactly what was going on, because you're right. The amount of water that was in that creek over the, all the years I've been involved in this, this year was the absolute worst. Normal places that were normally dry all these years had water in them. But I do have some concerns about this contract that was issued and how it was issued and why it was issued the way it was. And two feet away from a water, I don't know where that came from. That should have never been in there. And they should have been able to clear in the water. They always have in the past. So I'm not sure, I don't, the next contract going out next year, whatever it is, I would ask you to at least make us aware of what the content is and look for these types of things, because we do have another two years on our permit with Fish and Wildlife. And we need to make sure that we're looking at that permit when we're putting this together. And, and we're not excluding something that was excluded in this contract, like blackberry bushes that are within that permit, just because they didn't want to do it. That was the RFP, and it should not be changed unless it comes back to this board for a change. When we initiated that, that should have been what was in there. So now we're going back and it's really kind of costing us. But I think we have a good handle on it going forward. I appreciate you taking it over. I'm in agreement with Ben, and I think you're the person, you work with a lot of these people, and it is right up your alley. So I really appreciate us bringing this forward and getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you for your championship of this also. I appreciate it.
My only comments will be what I did before, which is in this next, when you guys come together in the new year, you've got to make this a priority, because this has got to be fixed, permanent. I know Gary's worked on it for, as long as I've been on this board, and I think it's worth the pull of all the board to figure out the solution. So with that, is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Toffnelli, seconded by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
All right, 27.
Item 27, informational item, Public Health Services. Receive a presentation from Calaveras County Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health Division, reporting the state of public health.
Ms. Rodriguez, welcome.
Hi, thanks. Who pushed it? Hello? Is it on now? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Good morning, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to be able to discuss the state of the public's health here in our county. Next slide, please. So we're going to go through a few things today. We're going to talk about some social drivers of health. We're going to talk about our community health data dashboard, which is pretty exciting, I think you'll find. And then we're going to talk about something else that's really exciting, which is our Community Health Improvement Plan. So first, we want to talk about the social drivers of health. So social drivers of health, which you can see right up there, are things that are not necessarily health-specific, but are really important factors that determine kind of many of our health outcomes. So economic stability, education access, healthcare and quality, neighborhood and built environment, and social and community context. So I'm going to quickly go through these in the context of Calaveras County. So not a big surprise to folks that economic stability does play a very big part in health. We know that in the United States, about 1 in 10 people live in poverty. Here in Calaveras County, we're at about 13 in 100. Why economic stability, you can go to the next slide. Why economic stability really matters is that because when people have steady employment, they're less likely to live in poverty. And when they don't live in poverty, they have a lot more opportunities to be healthy. I don't think any of this is a surprise to folks, but sometimes it's important to frame things that health isn't necessarily just your access to a doctor, but we will talk about that as well. Go ahead to the next slide. Education is also linked to many aspects of health as well. And here in Calaveras County, we're very fortunate to have a very high graduation, high school graduation rate. When you look at the United States and then even the state of California, our graduation rate is pretty high, next slide. But when you compare it, when you look at our bachelor's degree or higher, we are a little bit low. We're, we're lower than our region, but we're also significantly lower than our state.
Can I ask you really quickly, regional, what is that, Mariposa, Calaveras, Tuolumne, and Amador?
Yeah. So again, looking at those numbers, you can see that the, that we're lower than our region and we're lower than the state. And some of that, you can go to the next slide, some of that really, I would say, a lot of that really has to do with access. And these numbers, the miles are from San Andreas. But if you think about the fact that we don't have a community college in our county, folks have to travel anywhere from 28 to 68 miles. And when you think about going, you know, those opportunities for education, that's a lot of driving and that's, that limits access and creates barriers. And so we know that higher education increases access to health, health and healthy behaviors. Next slide. Health, oftentimes, when we talk about public health, a lot of times, folks think about healthcare access. We are, we do have a very, a low number, 58% of the folks in our county are uninsured, and that is, that's great. Next slide. However, when you look at the fact that over, for every two, over every 2,500 people, it's actually 2,570 people for one primary care physician is what we have in this county. So just think about that for a second. That means that for every 2,500 people, we've got one primary care doctor. So imagine if you have, if you need a pediatrician to visit, those numbers are even wilder. But just for a primary care provider, if you want to go in and get an annual exam, if you have a thing going on and you want to get that checked out, the numbers are kind of shocking. And next slide, please. So we know that at least 55% of our county, of our community, has to leave the county to get medical care. And that creates barriers for folks. And so when we start thinking about some of the factors that Haley's going to talk about, you can, you can imagine how those would impact that. Next slide, please. But you know, think about if someone is experiencing a mental health crisis or just, also just wants to see a mental health provider, the wait time would be tremendous and folks have to leave the county or utilize online access for that. Next slide, please. In addition to that, health is very influenced by our built environment and things that happen around us. And you can see here that our percent of crashes, so automobile accidents that involve alcohol and drugs, is almost twice that of the state of California. And there's a number of factors that, that could influence that, and I, and we'll talk about some of those in a second. Next slide, please. And we also know that it's not just automobile accidents, but it's pedestrian safety, it is, it is other built environment, things that I'm going to talk about in just a second. But we know that based on our community health assessment, that people really want a sound built environment where folks can go, more parks, more access to things. It's ironic that we have so much land in our community, but not a lot of land for people to go and be safe where they can recreate and engage in healthy behaviors. Next slide, please. And according to the community health assessment that Public Health conducted, 1 in 3 people in Calaveras County had to choose between buying food and buying necessities. That's a tough, tough choice. And we know that about 13% of people in Calaveras County don't have access to healthy food options. When we think about the more geographically isolated parts of our community, we know that accessing healthy food is a challenge. And so folks sometimes have to choose, do I want to use my gas to go to wherever, somewhere outside of my community, or do I want to use that, do I want to use the gas to go to a doctor, or do I even want to use that money to be able to, to take care of my basic needs? Next slide, please. So in addition to the built environment, to the access, we also have, it's important to know the social and community context. When we asked in our community health assessment, we had about 53% of folks who said that they felt somewhat safe. 30% said that they felt very safe. Next slide, please. But when we step back for a second and look beyond just safety, really important to think about, especially in the more geographically isolated areas, and especially important to think about with our older adults in our community, which makes up almost a third of our community, that social interaction, connection is a major driver of health. It's a driver of public, it's a driver of physical health, but it's also a huge driver of mental health as well. And so reminding us that that needs to also be a priority. And now I'm going to pass it over to Haley Graham.
All right. So we are very happy to announce our new public health dashboard, which basically is an interactive data dashboard full of local community health data that really focuses on mortality or causes of death. So it really allows us to sit there and prioritize basically reasons people may be passing away and their preventable causes of death, and then helps us identify ways we can go forth and address those challenges. And I am unfortunately unable to kind of show you and walk through that process right now, so we'll be sending out a press release later on this week, and you guys can kind of use the dashboard yourself. But with that, on that dashboard, there are some few key components that I do want to point out. So on there, you can basically identify our top reasons for preventable deaths within Calaveras County currently, our lung cancer, motor vehicle crashes, liver disease, drug overdose deaths, and suicide. And so comparatively to other counties in our same area, these are our top priorities going forward and are really going to be a major driver into why we start moving into different areas as a public health entity as well. Things we're doing good in, and some things that this dashboard could also show us better habits and ways we can continue being more effective in healthcare outcomes. Our stroke, our stroke rates comparatively to other counties are very low, as well as coronary heart disease and breast cancer rates. And so those are things we are currently doing well in and can continue working towards improving. Again, hopefully that dashboard will be released to you later this week, and you can kind of play with it and see how we line up to other counties in Calaveras. But a special shout out to our epidemiology and informatics team for kind of putting this together. This is kind of the first data dashboard of its kind that really highlights local health information. It makes it easier to move forward and use data as justification for getting more grant funding and continuing doing our jobs. And that said, now that we've been able to go through and identify all of these challenges we're facing in the community, what's next? We are looking to put out our Calaveras Community Health Improvement Plan. So this plan was developed, developed in combination with 15 local organizations, and we've come together to really highlight some key components that we want to address moving forward going through 2027. And so these are just some brief overview points. I didn't get too into detail for this, because we're going to be releasing the whole outcome and measures moving forward in February 2025. But we are hoping to increase the knowledge about local healthcare system services and disease prevention, expand local clinical spaces and services, and so making sure that people will not have to travel or transport outside of the county so much and maybe can find some things in-house. Post one, well-advertised, no-cost health fair, so really looking to get people connected to no-cost health care in the community, and also possibly finding permanent provider homes for them, whether that be dental, physical, or mental providers. Those, that fair will include health screenings, dental services, and prevention education. And then lastly, we are hoping to combine our efforts to recruit a medical transportation organization to reduce health access barriers that often arise due to transportation. And so that, these are our key goals over the next two years with these 15 local organizations. And so we'll be keeping up to date over the next couple of months, making sure that we're making progress and adhering to our plans, but really hoping to get as much and garner as much engagement as we can going forward with this. These are some additional resources. So if you are interested in looking into local health data for Calaveras, we obviously have our community health assessment, so that is on our public health webpage and available to everyone to see. County health rankings and roadmaps, this is actually a really good resource to cross compare against other counties in other states. United States Census, always good baseline information. USDA Economic Research Service, so that pulls some of our economic data that we showed earlier. And then the statewide integrated traffic record system, also known as WITERS, and that helps with our motor vehicle accident information. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions more? Thank you, Susan. I should know better. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
It's good to have data driving our decisions. Appreciate their comments.
And we really encourage you, when the, when the data dashboard comes out, it's really helpful. It'll be helpful for everyone, so.
Ms. Graham, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will take a five-minute bio break to allow planning to set up for the next item, 28, and we will return here at 10:35. All right, welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We will begin with item, I'm sorry, twen-
28.
Jeez, 28. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. 28, right? Take us away.
Item 28, ordinance planning. One, conduct a public hearing. Two, adopt a sequoet mitigated negative declaration. Three, adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 042031017 300 St. Charles Street in San Andreas from multiple family residential R3 to general commercial C2 for St. for St. Charles Hospitality LLC. And four, authorize summary publication and a brief property description and map of the reclassified property.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wow, guys, I'm really off today. My last day, and I just can't seem to get on cue. I am opening a public hearing.
No more short-timing, Jack.
It doesn't.
Good morning. My name's Catherine Stephanie. I'm a planner two with the Calaveras County Planning Department. And just a quick note, I will also be presenting item 29 at the same time, the Plane Project 2024-038 height variance as they go together. The application proposes to amend the zoning of APN 042-031-017, the subject parcel, which is outlined in red, from multi-family residential R3 to general commercial C2. The applicant proposes to merge the subject parcel with the adjacent C2 parcel, outlined in white on the screen, to develop a four-story, 79-room hotel and separate restaurant. The applicant has also requested a height variance to allow the hotel eight feet and one inch above the 45-foot height limit. The project is being processed under the previous zoning code effective at the time the application was deemed complete in 2023. This is a site plan that shows the proposed site development with the Highway 20, excuse me, Highway 49 at the top of the screen. The hotel will be back in the middle, and the restaurant will be up adjacent to Highway 49. The parcel proposed for rezoning, which is currently vacant, is zoned R3. This zone is intended to provide lands for high-density residential uses where commercial and public services are readily available. The proposed C2 zone is intended for intensive and general commercial land uses, and hotels and restaurants are permitted uses in the C2 zone under the previous zoning code. Again, portions of the hotel are proposed to be above the 45-foot height limit of the zone and the applicant has applied for a variance. The project site is within the San Andreas Community Plan area, and a general plan amendment is not required as the proposed C2 zoning is compatible with the current community center designation. The surrounding area has a mix of land uses consisting of commercial, residential, and public service zoned parcels, including two banks to the north, Treat's Grocery Store to the east, residences, including single-family residences and apartment complexes to the north and south, and auto parts stores and services to the south as well. The zoning application was routed for 30 days to various county departments, local public agencies, and state agencies requesting comments on the project. The only comment received was from Caltrans stating the necessity of an encroachment permit if work is done in the state right of way. The variance application was also routed for 30 days, and Caltrans restated their original comments, and PG&E sent a standard response letter regarding work done on their property within their easements. The notices of public hearing for both the planning commission and board meetings were mailed to property owners within 300 feet. The, excuse me, okay. The project is found consistent with the general plan. The general plan intends to promote the development of communities and a strong economy that facilitates independent and economically viable communities. It also encourages the renovation and reuse of vacant infill parcels. And this project would develop two vacant parcels in a central location in San Andreas, generating jobs, supporting tourism and recreation in the county, and increasing property taxes and transient occupancy taxes through this development. The general plan also intends for new development to be designed to integrate with and enhance the community and surrounding uses with compatible architecture and site design. This is a similar policy that's found in the general plan, excuse me, the San Andreas Community Plan, which encourages the use of Gold Rush and Motherlode-style architecture in the historic center land use designation. However, as you can see, the subject parcel, which is down at the bottom of the screen designated by the star, is approximately 500 feet from the historic center land use designation. Additionally, buildings located in the vicinity include the two banks. This is the El Dorado Bank, immediately adjacent to the subject parcel, the Wells Fargo Bank across the highway, Treat's Grocery Store, the Napa Auto Parts Store, the residence immediately adjacent to the project site, the auto shop, also immediately adjacent to the project site, and then a commercial strip a little further down the street. There are no cohesive characteristics, nor is there a standard architectural design among these buildings. So existing conditions make it difficult to review for and request specific design characteristics for this development. While this will be the largest building in the area, the positioning of the restaurant in the front will help, along with the topography of the parcel, to mitigate the visual impact of the development. They also use more neutral colors and natural elements that will lessen the visual impact as well. Another goal of the general plan is the development of affordable housing throughout communities. However, the rezoning of this parcel will not have a significant impact on this goal. The property has been zoned R3 since 1978, and there has been little interest in developing it for residential purposes due to the steep slope shape of the property and lack of direct access from Highway 49. Additionally, after rezoning, there would be approximately 84 acres of vacant R2 and R3 property remaining in the San Andreas community area. And those R2 and R3 parcels are shown in yellow on the screen. The proposed regated negative declaration imposes several measures that address potential impacts to these resources and facilitate compliance with the general plan. General Plan Circulation Element Policy C2.2 requires that road impacts associated with new development not reduce the level of service below D in community areas. The traffic study provided in the SEQUA document shows that the whole of the project would add incremental traffic on Highway 49 and impact two intersections. There are the Highway 49 and Pool Station Road intersection, which currently operates at level of service E for the AM peak period, and the Highway 49 Mountain Ranch Road intersection, which currently operates at level of service F for PM peak hours. However, the discretionary approval itself would not be at fault for reducing the level of service below D as, again, these intersections are already operating below that standard. Much of the development of the restaurant and part of the hotel could be done without discretionary approval. And what this parcel, excuse me, what this table on the screen shows is, on the left, under apartments, is if the parcel were to stay zoned R3, what the traffic impacts would be and what the hotel rooms would be if only developed on the current C2 parcel, the adjacent parcel. The difference is minimal, and therefore, we believe the impact would be very small with this allowed rezoning. The project will also be required to pay room fees for which fund long-term improvements to these intersections. And while unfunded at this time, plans have been developed through the Calaveras Council of Governments and Caltrans and were approved by the county for improvements to these and other intersections in San Andreas. Again, as previously mentioned, the project is also found consistent with the San Andreas Community Plan policies. Pursuant to SEQUA guidelines, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared by Ultra Systems Environmental, reviewed by county staff, and was available for public review from August 16 through September 16 of 2024. Caltrans submitted another letter requiring an encroachment permit and asked for clarification on modeling information in the traffic study that was provided to them to their satisfaction. And the Regional Water Board sent a standard response that didn't raise concerns for environmental impacts. Fifteen public comment letters were received. Many didn't address environmental impacts. The ones that did raised concerns regarding sewer capacity, impacts to the intersections on Highway 49, and aesthetics. But no significant environmental impacts related to these comments were found, and no changes to the mitigated negative declaration were necessitated. Excuse me. Significant impacts were found for the biological, cultural, and tribal cultural resources and geology and soil section of the environmental checklist, and mitigation measures have been imposed on the project, requiring conformance with the initial study mitigated negative deck and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program included in the initial study. These elements will lessen the impact to less than significant for the project. The applicant has also requested a height variance to allow the proposed hotel to encroach eight feet and one inch above the 45-foot height limit in the C2 zone. The applicant initially requested a variance for a stair overrun parapet, mechanical equipment screening, two suite parapets, and a signed parapet with a decorative trellis. They've revised their request to remove the decorative trellis and the remaining, asked that the remaining elements exceed the 45-foot height limit. On this screen, you can see this is looking north. So if you were coming up Highway 49 from Angel's Camp into San Andreas, the boxes show all of the elements that are asking to be above that 45-foot height limit. To grant the variance, there are four findings that must be made. The first of which is that exceptional or extraordinary circumstances apply to the property, which don't apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, and that result from the lot or shape, topography, or other circumstances which the owners have no control over. The subject parcels are steep with a slope averaging 28% and are oddly shaped. And while there are other steep properties in the vicinity, the combination of the two properties forms a T shape. The parcel is steeper, steeper than other properties in the vicinity and San Andreas as a whole. And so therefore, the height variance is necessary for an economically viable project. Therefore, this finding can be met. The second is that the variance is necessary for the preservation of a property right by the proponent that other property owners in the same, in the same zone or vicinity possess. Again, to fully utilize the steep T-shaped parcel to enable an economically viable project, encroachment into the height limit is necessary to provide adequate square footage plus access to the roof and screening of the rooftop equipment, as well as the suite and parapet walls necessary to provide architectural compatibility. Third, the variance should not be materially detrimental to the purpose of Title 17 or to property in the same zone or vicinity in which the project is located or otherwise conflicted with the objects of any, excuse me, with the objectives of any county plan, ordinance, or policy. The project is consistent with the general plan and the extension of the height for rooftop access, mechanical equipment screening, and the parapet walls would not adversely affect similarly zoned properties in the vicinity. Neither would it frustrate the purpose of the height standards in the C2 zone. Therefore, this finding can also be made. Lastly, the variance requested is the minimum variance, which would alleviate the hardship. And access to the roof to maintain equipment is necessary for the function of the building and screening of the mechanical equipment is desirable for community aesthetics. The additional parapets are architectural features necessary for the functioning of the structure, and this finding can be made as well. The Planning Commission recommends that the board grant the applicant's request with the exception that the suite parapet must be lowered to the height of the signed parapet or lower. So again, on the screen, you can see everything that the applicant has requested in the green and blue boxes. The only change would be to lower the brown box in the brown box and the blue box to the height of the signed parapet or lower than that. This is just a close-up. This is the view of the hotel from Highway 49, not from Highway 49, though. Again, the previous one showed that this will all be higher than eye level. Closer view. And then at the November 14, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, two public comments were received, one in favor of the project and one asking general questions. The Planning Commission recommends the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring report, approval of the zoning amendment, and granting in part of the variance. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed zoning amendment to C2 consistent with the general plan, Title 17, and compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning. Additionally, staff recommends that the variance be granted in part and denied in part, allowing all of the, the height variance elements requested with the exception of the parapets being lowered, the suite parapets being lowered, the lots meet the minimum requirements for C2 parcels within public water and wastewater service areas, and there is no substantial evidence that the project as designed and mitigated will have a significant effect on the environment. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Counsel has advised me, and I agree. We need to, I need to make clear that this is a hearing for item 28 and 29, where we're doing a zoning amendment and a variance. And we will take it in a single vote unless there's objection by the board. Is that right, counsel?
Yes, that's fine. If anyone wants to make public comments on either or both, they can do it at this time.
Okay. So we are in a public comment. Are there questions from the board at this time before we take public comment? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on item 28 or 29? And I actually, let me, let me let the applicant make a statement if they'd like first. Would you like, that's our normal process. So would anybody, would the applicant like to make a statement before we continue the public comment? Nope? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Ms. Brock, Mr. Bolger, it's going to be a race.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Brock. I was born and raised here in San Andreas. I know many of them. I'm also a veteran of the travel industry of over 50 years, including hotel management and sales. And when I first heard about this project, I was really excited. And I am, I'm really excited about it. In fact, I sat on a board, a Marriott board, which is the parent company of Fairfield Inn for the incentive and travel industry, and was, I even met Bill Marriott. But anyway, I was just very impressed with Marriott as a company. It's continually growing. I'm seeing, I'm seeing their hotels all over Northern California. There's one in Oakhurst that just opened. So I, I'm very impressed. I think this would be a huge boon to Calaveras County, to San Andreas in particular, which really needs it. I'm a past president of the Historical Society, and it breaks my heart that we have these beautiful facilities. So interesting. We have a wonderful staff there working so hard. And very few people show up to see it, to visit it. So I think a property like this in San Andreas would be a huge boon to San Andreas and to the entire county. So I think that on the, this is a technical thing you're trying to decide. But I would say, whatever it takes, we need to get properties like this in San Andreas. Thank you.
Mr. Bolger.
Morning, board. Mark Bolger, property owner in San Andreas, owner of Goonies Bar and Grill right down the street. I think this is an absolutely amazing project. Very excited about it. Everyone in town I've talked to thinks this is exactly what San Andreas needs. A man much, much wiser than me and a couple decades on me in the county and in years once told me that a Calaveras County can be at times allergic to opportunity. I think we can prove him wrong, with all due respect to him. I think this is going to be a huge benefit for the town, and I would encourage the board to go with staff's recommendation and approve this so these guys can get a shovel ready project in the works. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment on item 28 or 29? Seeing none. I will be closing-
I'm sorry, I want to make sure we don't have any online.
Online public comment?
We do not have any public comment online.
Very well. I am bringing it back to the board. I am closing the public hearing and bringing it back for questions from the board or a motion.
I will move this item, Mr. Chair.
Supervisors Taffanelli has moved item 28 and 29. Is there a second?
Could I second it, but could I just say one thing? I just, I want to mirror what Ms. Brock said. And I think so many buildings were lost in San Andreas of integrity when the 49 went through. And I think bringing back this architectural front to the main street would be phenomenal. And I agree with you. We desperately need more hotel rooms in the county, and this is going to be fantastic. We desperately need more hotel rooms in, in the county, and this is gonna be fantastic. And the fact that they're willing to invest this kind of money in our community is amazing. So thank you. Second.
The second. Supervisor Stopper.
Just, you know, the Marriott, we, we, we travel, we travel often, and the Marriott's a very upstanding industry, not, not industry, but company, and, and where they have, it's very clean, nice, and I just want to thank you for thinking about Calaveras County and being willing to invest in here. That's all.
I would like to echo that, and really thank you for making the investment in our county. This is an amenity that we need, it's gonna drive tourism, it'll give us places to lodge people, and it's good to make an investment in our community. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries? Pose, carries five-zero. Congratulations. Okay. Do you guys need, okay, we will, Madam Clerk, I'll let these guys.
Item thirty, resolution, county clerk, recorder, and registrar of voters, adopt a resolution declaring the results of the canvas for the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four California Presidential General Election.
Thank you.
The item I'm bringing forward today is the, I'm asking you guys to adopt the declaration of the canvas certified on December third. Typically, I don't bring this, I put it on consent because it's routine and non-controversial. However, we did go through a few challenges this last election, and I don't think people really noticed, and that's because we had so many great people helping us out, and I just want to thank them. So if I have a couple minutes, just to thank the people who helped us. We had two power outages at the vote centers, one in Jenny Lent over the weekend, and then Monday before Election Day at Bret Hart Theater. Luckily Bret Hart Theater was on it, they just had been donated a generator, and they hooked it up and had it up within an hour for us, so we can keep, we kept voting throughout that power outage. Jenny Lent was a little less planned, so they did temporarily go down, but they helped voters through. But, sorry, at Bret Hart, Scott Nannick jumped right in and helped, and Derek setting up the generator, and then Dave Dugan also was there to assist the facility. At Jillian Spitz Hall where that occurred, OES was on top of it, Eric was contacting me right away, letting me know what had occurred, and, in general, just there to be help. Throughout, when we were listed as a potential PSPS, Eric also, along with Balji, was giving us updates and letting us know that if, if something occurred, they'd be right there to get a generator running so we could be back and going. County facilities, Kevin and his group, they helped us set up ballot boxes, delivered and helped us set up ballot boxes, they picked up ballots on election night, they helped us clean up a site election night, and they brought ballots back. The sheriff's office, Rochelle, was right there to offer assistance. We had trailer cams at two of our largest sites, just in case something was to occur or to keep anything from occurring, as there was lots of angst about the election. Both Captain Ballard and Sergeant Bridges supported us throughout Election Day, roaming the county, and they picked up ballots election night and brought them back to our office. County IT and General Lynn, Brian, Derek, Mark, they were always available and they were always looking out for us. So, like, the power went out, I got like three calls, "Did you know a power outage here?" So I got one from IT, I got one from OES, everyone was contacting me to be like, "Did you know this is happening?" So I really appreciated everyone being on the lookout. And Drenrol, our community and our voters were amazing. You heard all the angst in the news about what was going on, but nothing like that occurred in our county. If so, it was very minor, and our poll workers settled it easily. Everyone was patient, even when the lines were long, even when the power was out, so I just have to thank everyone for being so gracious with us. And then the poll workers, of course, continuing to volunteer, even when you hear all this negative energy or these potential acts might occur, and still being willing to jump up and volunteer and help in the process. They had questions, like if there should be concerns about safety, and we told them our protocols, but they still were there to support us. They take the commitment seriously, and they strive to do well by the community they're serving, so I think that's really great that we have all those wonderful people in our county to help us out. And then, of course, my election staff, my entire staff, doesn't matter what department they work in, they worked long hours, they worked weekends, they didn't complain, they were always willing to pitch in and help each other, and the atmosphere in our office, even when we're working together for hours on end, days on end, everyone's still pleasant with one another, and I really appreciate that. And in general, I think my entire office loves providing quality service to our county, so that's all I have to say. Do you guys have any questions about the election?
Do you want to make a statement?
Just, the election turnout actually was phenomenal, too, from what I saw and everything, so that's a tribute to the voters and, and making their, making their, their choice heard.
Exactly. We had an eighty-two percent turnout roughly, so it was a very high turnout, probably third highest in twenty years, so, very high.
Supervisor Hubbard?
Becky, could I ask you, both quickly, how many people in the audience were here, could I see a couple that I know that actually helped you, if they could stand, it would be?
Yeah, if anyone was here that worked Election Day.
No, just Marty.
Just Marty.
There's one of them, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, thank you for doing this and coming forward and recognizing all these people after all these years, though, and Marita helped out, she was in Philadelphia this year, so she wasn't here helping us, but, yeah, she helped for a long time.
She did. She explained why she needed to be there versus here, so she did explain herself to me.
Becky, I want to, Madam Clerk, her, thank you very much, and to all your team, and I, I think we're very proud of the elections they get run in this county. They're clean, they're efficient, they're trustworthy, you give a lot of confidence in democracy, and you guys are the, are the front line, making sure that every vote counts, and thank you sincerely. That is not all, we still have questions from the board or public comment.
I'll hang out.
Any further questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes.
Mr. Butner?
My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of Calaveras2026election.com. Concerning the results of the canvas for the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four California Presidential General Election, the voters selected an enthusiastic political newcomer as their District Two representative. The District Two election was particularly nasty with the eventual victor, Autumn Andal, having withstood a challenge to her transparency, honesty, and integrity following an orchestrated attempt to impugn her reputation executed by Carrie Biggs Adams, a District Two representative for the Calaveras County Democratic Central Committee, an avid Trevor Whitkey supporter. Andal handled those attacks with dignity, exhibiting grace under pressure, as well as exhibiting the qualities of transparency, honesty, and integrity that she had been alleged to have lacked by Carrie Biggs Adams. Congratulations to Supervisor-elect Autumn Andal. As for Supervisor-elect Andal's opponent, Trevor Whitkey, and his supporter Carrie Biggs Adams, having cast dispersions upon Andal and having suggested nefarious campaign finance activity occurred, and having exploited Andal's rookie mistake and inexperience as a political novice with her FPPC campaign filing violations for Whitkey's short-term political gain, well, that was an embarrassing bust for them that backfired on Whitkey. Carrie Biggs Adams conflated an unfortunate sequence of non-intentional filing errors on Andal's required FPPC campaign documents into a specious implication of intentional lack of transparency, honesty, and integrity. In her letter to the editor, Carrie Biggs Adams is quoted, "I want a supervisor who understands how to fill out common forms and knows what it means to say they will act with absolute transparency, honesty, and integrity." I suggest Carrie Biggs Adams refocus her ire concerning violations of the Political Reform Act and express her ire and desire that all Calaveras supervisors be required to understand and execute their legal requirements for correctly and timely filing their FPPC forms and to know what it means to act with absolute transparency, honesty, and integrity. Carrie Biggs Adams and Trevor Whitkey, too, might consider voicing ire where it appropriately belongs at four incumbent Calaveras supervisors, Follendorf and Hubbard, both of whom have FPPC cases open and pending against them, and Toffenelli and Stopper, both of whom have, the FPPC Enforcement Division notified me yesterday in writing that the complaints I filed against both respectively for multiple violations of the Political Reform Act remain under review for opening of investigations. My name's Christopher Butner, publisher of Calaveras2020 Election, and Autumn, absolute transparency, honesty, and integrity.
Thank you. Okay, Marty? Come on down.
Well, I'm going positive. I can't go negative. There's nothing negative to bring. I just wanted to say that, there's negative things, and we all hear them, and we don't have to keep broadcasting them, but I just wanted to say that, for the elections department, since that's what we're talking about today, I couldn't be more proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you should hire.
Is there, is there other, is there, Marty, is there other public comment regarding the election canvassing? Very well, I'll bring it back to, is there any online?
We have no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries five-zero. Okay, we have a different, we have a little change in the agenda, we're gonna move number thirty-two forward in supervisor announcements, because we have a time certain for swearing in our new electeds at eleven-thirty. That will be held next door. When we're completed with the swearing-in, the meeting will have been adjourned, if that works for everybody. So, when we move on, before we move to that item, I'll take public comment in this room. If you've got any issues with swearing people in, that would be the time to do it, but otherwise, we'll go next door and swear, lead the ceremony. Okay, item thirty-two.
Item thirty-two, proclamation, clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Adopted proclamation recognizing Jack Guaramendi for his service to the residents of Calaveras County and congratulating him on his retirement from the Board of Supervisors.
Board Chair passes the gavel to the Vice Chair, Mr. Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to start with a couple of words that I came up with. A very famous English writer wrote, "To give real service, you must add something which cannot be bought or measured with money, and that is sincerity and integrity. As elected officials in Calaveras County, we play a pivotal role in shaping our communities' present and future. We're tasked with a mandate of public service. We carry the weighty responsibility to represent the interests of our constituents while fostering growth, prosperity, and inclusivity within our communities. And with that, I just want to thank Chair Guaramendi, whose tenure with this board over the last eight years exemplifies what public service should be." So with that, let's read this proclamation, "Presented his constituents for the past eight years. The purchase and renovation of the Railroad Flat Community Center is a prime example of Chairman Guaramendi's strong representation of District Two. Whereas, when offered a mint, Chairman Guaramendi's sage advices, if offered, always take one because that obviously means you need it. And whereas Chairman Guaramendi has long been a strong champion of Calaveras County's emergency preparedness and recovery efforts, taking the lead in the recovery initiatives for District Two following the Butte Fire of twenty-fifteen, which included the critical reconstruction of Jesus Maria Road. And whereas Supervisor Follendorf is offering an honorary hall pass to Fourth Crossing as a long, as long as you provide advance notice. And whereas Chairman Guaramendi has aggressively pursued infrastructure improvements in District Two, successfully guiding road enhancements for Campo Seco Turnpike, Easy Bird Road, Lafayette Street, Moretta Road, Bald Mountain Road, and other vital projects. And whereas, as the Calaveras representative to the Rural County Representatives of California for eight years, Chairman Guaramendi has firmly supported initiatives to improve residents' access to broadband and affordable housing. And whereas Jack's relentless efforts with RCRC include deploying an open-access last-mile fiber network ensuring that all residents of Calaveras County have reliable internet access. And whereas this resolution is brief and to the point, and just as Jack preferred all of his meetings and correspondence." And with that, I'll open it to public comment. Lori?
Hi. Just thanks, friend. Been through, there's been a lot, from the Butte Fire Task Force and helping rebuild Mountain Ranch, to all the things at the fairgrounds, and you jumping frogs, and all the things, so just thank you. You've been an amazing person to work with.
Thank you, Lori.
Sheriff?
Uh-oh.
Sheriff Rochelle Whiting. Good morning, Chair. On behalf of myself, under Sheriff Legus, and the entire Sheriff's Office, we just want to say thank you, sir. The actions and the decisions that you have made in this room have truly saved lives. From the resources that we've been able to obtain during your tenure, to the innovative equipment we've been able to acquire through the, the budget allocation with this board, most importantly, the armored vehicles that you've allowed us to purchase that have taken fire during multiple officer-involved shootings, I have no doubt that there would have been injuries or possibly lives left, lives, lives lost if it wasn't for your decisions. So we just want to say thank you so much for your service to the county, and I appreciate your open communication and being a conduit so that your constituents can always speak through you, and getting a hold of us when you're, when you are hearing things and letting us get ahead of the curve, and we can co-produce some solutions over these years for District Two. I'm a resident of District Two, I appreciate everything that you do for us, and just want to say thank you very much, sir. We'll miss you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good morning, Chairman Guaramendi. Terry Lane, resident of Calaveras County, not in District Two, but I'm just here to congratulate you on your retirement of your eight outstanding years of service with the Board of Supervisors. And I've been privileged to get to know you through your work with the first five commissioned. I want to thank you for your unwavering support, your encouragement, and your words of wisdom that you shared with myself and my team throughout the years. And on a very personal note, I want to say that what I truly value is that through your work, I was to see your heart, and to know and see the evidence of how much you love and care for the families and children in this community. I thank you, Supervisor Guaramendi, and I remember you always. Best wishes.
Thank you, Terry.
Barbara Yuke, District Attorney. I want to thank you for some kind words you shared with me many, many, many years ago after the passing of Jeff Tuttle. I don't know if you remember, but it was the first time we met, and I wanted to thank you for that. They stayed with me for a very long time, and your support helped me, I think, be successful in one, I suddenly found myself in a very new role. I also want to thank you for being so well-prepared every time for every board meeting. I knew that if I was coming to the board with an item, I had to be extra super-prepared because you always had very pointed questions, also known as vicious cross-examination, as I would put it, and I've watched so many people have to withstand what I can only call is cross-examination. So, now that you're retired, I would encourage you to go to law school and apply for an opening with my office, not with Sarah, but with my office, okay? Congratulations, and thank you.
Hey, Jack, lucky for you I got bronchitis, because I had a lot of things to say, but I can't leave you without saying thank you from my other hat at the Railroad Flat Community Center, Railroad Flat Ballpark in our community. You've been amazing, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you, and congratulations, and I'm not losing your numbers still.
Hi, Supervisor Guaramendi. So, Colleen Rodriguez, Deputy Director of Public Health, wants to say, thank you for being such an amazing champion for rural communities, our realities, our goods, our bads, but really fighting, giving the good fight in Sacramento for us, and, and making sure that we're well-represented. Thank you. Colleen Rodriguez, as Calaveras resident, would like to thank you just for always being there for the good fight, always looking out for us in Calaveras, and just leading with integrity, and just, you know, being a good example for others who want to follow your steps in public. steps in public service. So, thank you.
Eric Hald, oh yes, I just want to say thank you for everything. You know, I only got to be here for the last six months, but acknowledging your service to the county, your service to our nation with the Army, and making my transition here warm and welcoming. So thank you so much. I wish you well in retirement, but also keep that phone line open in case we need you.
Jack, Police and Medina Environmental Management Agency, I just want to say thank you. You know, it's been a pleasure getting to know you over the past eight years, and one thing that you said to me I will never forget, and I will continue to remember this, is the heart. You know, you have a heart for our community, and you told me that I have a good heart too, and that truly is special to me, and it means a lot, only because, you know, that's what we embody, right? We want to make sure that we're going to continue to protect our community, to make sure that we're doing the right things, to protect our humans, to have the love for humans and our animals. So thank you.
Robert Pakinger, Public Works. We worked through quite a number of projects together, a lot of years working together, and we've also worked through some very difficult issues together. And throughout the whole time, you've always provided great leadership. I'd like to thank you, and our department would like to thank you for that great leadership. Thank you.
Chair Guaramendi, wow, this is your last board meeting. It's been an honor to work with you for the past almost seven years for me. I know it's been eight for you. Thank you for being a support to economic and community development, to parks and recreation, to our citizens, to broadband, to housing, to all these great things. Thank you. I wish you well. I don't think it's retirement, though. I know you pretty good enough. I think you've got other irons in the fire, and I have a little something for you later.
Any other public comment? Craig.
I'll keep it quick. But yeah, Jack, it has been a pleasure to work with you. I really appreciate your openness. You have those two ears, you use them in proportion with this, but you also provide good guidance, and I really appreciate your directness and business to getting things done. But the one thing I will think about you is that you're a man who's very passionate, and you have great to that. So anyway, thank you.
Well, eight years down, Jack. I was telling your wife a couple of minutes ago that, my wife's actually, her due date was three days ago, still don't have our second born yet, and I was joking that either I was going to be in here in person or I was going to be in the delivery room on my Zoom call making a comment online. I think it was August of 2015 when we first met and you were talking about running for our district, and obviously the Butte Fire happened very shortly after that, and I'm thinking there's no way in hell he still wants this job. And man, I'm so glad. Everyone in District Two is so lucky that you did grab the bull by the horns, and that was a rough recovery. We're still not fully there, but we're really, really lucky that we had you at the helm. On top of the Butte Fire recovery, something that people don't always associate with District Two is, you know, there was a lot of jobs there, and there are again because of the work you did. The amount of families that have you to thank for the jobs that they have to put food on their table in our district, it's a staggering amount. People might not even think about how many there really are that just owe you gratitude for what you've done for us. So, Jack, gonna miss you on this board. Thank you so much. I know it's a thankless job oftentimes, and we appreciate very much so that you stuck it out for two full terms. So best of luck on the future endeavors, sir.
So I don't know how many people know this, but whether you like me or not, you're the reason I'm here. And primarily because when I was out driving around in the hot sun doing inspections, you called me to ask if I really had an interest in coming this way, and I found that remarkable because I wouldn't expect a board member to reach out and talk to people in the area and entice people to come work for the county. It's kind of signaled something new and different. In the last six years, I've come to know that you've been a very big supporter of change in general, but for the right reasons, not just change for the sake of change, but change with a purpose. And your dedication to preserving the constitutional rights of citizens in your district, I have a great respect for. You hold your oaths sacred, and as one Army vet to another, this will defend. Thank you.
Marty?
So thank you. I just wanted to say that, Marty Crane, I have been honored to serve on the county school board for the last ten-plus years, and I find that to be one of the most effective, productive, eager-to-learn, eager-to-engage-in-self-development boards that I have ever served on. And I get to serve on it with your wife, Colleen. She's amazing. Thank you for letting us have her. Not that you let her do anything, she's a woman of her own, and as we all are, right? But I wanted to acknowledge that and say that prior to your coming to district, this position on this board, Supervisor Walensky was here. He did amazing things for District Two, and thank you for building on that and keeping that going. And I have to wonder, whatever happened to CHIPS? Is it still there? I mean, or did the CHIPS program?
I was discussing like they are.
Yes. Oh, I know, I know, I know. But anyway, but then, and I just wanted to mention that on the school board, we've always got to focus on the children. But a challenge to everybody else, remember that for every child, there are adults and there are seniors that are impacting that child, and they all have challenges too. So I challenge you to, we'll talk. Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you. We have three minutes left because.
We have online.
Okay. The Chair wanted to end this meeting at eleven-thirty, so go.
Hold on. Mr. Ferguson, go ahead, please.
We can go a little.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ferguson.
Hi, thank you. Craig Ferguson with Rural County Representatives of California. Supervisor Guaramendi, your leadership and influence with RCRC and its affiliates are going to be missed. You're political savvy as well as you're business savvy. I carry a ton of respect, as you know, with this board, with the RCRC board as well as staff. I personally enjoyed working with you on the business side of RCRC from housing, forest resiliency, and more recent and important, the broadband initiative with you chairing Golden State Connect Authority. Supervisor Guaramendi, more importantly, I've enjoyed your friendship over the years and look forward to continuing that, and I know I speak for Barbara, Pat, and many of RCRC staff on that too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana?
Dana.
No, I do not. I just have sincere words of thanks. Dana Jorgensen, worked for eight different legislators over the last thirty years, thirty-one. I just want to come and say thank you for being a good friend. When you're a legislative employee, it's a very unique job, and you're kind of just stuck out there and you kind of have to figure things out. And sometimes I'd have questions and I could call you and you could. Maybe I'll get a secret response, I hope. But sometimes when I'm out working on my property, maybe you are too, maybe you're wearing something like this, you get really good thoughts, and you are, you are a workhorse, just like these boots, and you're helpful to everybody, and I really appreciate your friendship going forward. So on to, on to better things. And also, the last thing is having this job, it's a relationships job. Your wife is wonderful. I just want to, she reminds me of my wife, and when you meet a spouse of a supervisor, a lot of things click, and you're like, hmm, okay, I get it. So yeah, you have a great relationship there. Thank you.
Any more comments?
No further public online comment, sorry.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
I would, I would like to just say a couple things, Jack. You know, they asked for input on this. As you know, I could talk all day and we can never fit it on one piece of paper, so, you know, I'll talk to you about those later. But I do want to give you, you know, my thanks and a little bit of chagrin, you know? We've taken wisdom from each other over these years. Something I'm going to repeat that you said, you know, success has many fathers, failure is the bastard. You know, I would not call you the former because working together on this board, you are one of the many fathers or mother, mothers, to success that we've come here. But, you know, you're leaving us. I wouldn't be here if you hadn't told me I couldn't build my house in Moke Hill before I did and told me I had to stay where I was at in District Five. So there's a little bit of the former right there for you, but, you know, I'm still in District Five, and hopefully one day I'll be able to join you over there in District Two, and we can reminisce on those words I didn't put down on paper for you. You're awesome. With that, I'll make a motion if everyone else will let me.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Oh, yeah.
Jack, I think you and I, current board, have been on here the longest. We joined at the same time. We've gone through a lot of things, a lot of contentious at the first couple of years. As it moved on, we grew closer together and we started working together, and I just want to say it's a pleasure working with you, and I just want to say. We will miss you.
I'm going to echo what Doug said earlier. I would not be sitting up here if it wasn't for you and your wife convincing me to jump ship from the city and put my name in the hat and run. And it has been great working with you. Thank you for welcoming me to the board. Thank you for letting me be involved down in RCRC and following you around. It has been great the last couple of years, and it's really been an honor and a privilege to sit next to you. And thank you for, thank you for being also that mentor when needing it, and I wish you the best in the next, next chapter. I can't wait to see what that is. I think we're all wondering what that's going to be.
Chair.
Okay, I am an emotional guy, but I'mma hold it together. Carrie almost broke me there. But I will try to be brief and to the point, and I apologize I couldn't do this in three minutes, a public comment, which is really something I wanted to do. But first, I want to thank my fellow board members for their commitment to the betterment of our county. While we have not always agreed, this board is thoughtful and I've never doubted where your hearts are. In over three hundred meetings, I have sat at this table, so I speak with confidence that this is the best board I have been a part of by far. I know that Supervisor-elect Andal will be a good fit for you all, and I have a positive outlook for the future of this county. I really do. I also want to specifically thank the hard-working people who serve their own communities every day. The men and women of this county who fix our roads, provide public safety, care for our sick, feed and protect our young are real heroes in what they do every single day for us all. I'm proud to have worked alongside our employees. You are my friends, you are my neighbors, you are my allies in making our county thrive, and I thank you all very much. You're real leaders. It has been an interesting ride these last eight years. Day one was Butte Fire recovery. While the community will never be what it was, it is now something different, and that is the nature of change. We did our best. We survived the cannabis wars, often seeing the worst of our community and sometimes this board. We created the first complete general plan in thirty years and created an accompanying strategic plan. We, as a county, have a roadmap, and this county is well-organized, and we now have the tools available to work cooperatively, solve problems, and take advantages, take advantage of opportunities when they arrive. I could think of no single event that has shaped this board as much as COVID. From the start, we were told as a board to prepare for eight hundred bodies in two weeks. We have bonded together. Most petty disputes fade when things get that real. We did our work alongside our courageous and hard-working staff, and I would argue that COVID made us a better board. Didn't make many things better, but you've got to try to find the sunny side to everything, I suppose. There are other things I want to reflect on, from leading state efforts to Golden State Connect Authority and RCRC, but what I take the greatest pride in is our community. We rebuilt as best we could from the Butte Fire. We fixed the roads, put fire engines in every firehouse, remodeled our town halls, built fire tanks in Sheep Ranch, a community center, railroad flat, and many, many other projects, large and small. We built. This and hundreds of small successes that we had in our community make me very proud to be a part of it and proud to have served. There is one person who deserves a major thank you, though. My wife, Dr. Colleen Denny Guaramendi. I could not have done this without you. You listened to me after endless meetings, helped me navigate towards solutions, and have been my rock. It has not been easy for you. People are often mean, and you have been a defender and ally of mine day in and day out. You have been my compass and always reminded me to keep my bearings and stay focused on the work that must be done to make our community thrive. You always encouraged me to focus on the duty to the people I represent. I love you with all my heart, and I thank you for standing by me as we travel this road together. I also want to thank. That's the person who deserves the applause, no two ways. I also want to thank my two sons, who grew up in a house with two elected officials. That is not an easy task, and I should know. Thank you. I love you both with all my heart. So, that is my swung song. Not as brief as I prefer, but to the point. I will believe in you all, but I am not going far, and I intend to remain rooted and active in my community. My great-grandfather always used to say that you leave things better than you found them, no matter if you are fixing a water trough or serving on the governing board of a county. I believe that Calaveras County is better than I found it. Representing D2 has been an honor, and I thank my community for allowing me to serve them in this truly public trust. Thank you.
So do I have a motion?
We haven't voted yet.
We need to do it all over again.
I'll continue my motion.
And a second? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes Jack Guaramendi's dedication to the Calaveras County and congratulates him on his lifetime contributions to District Two and Calaveras County, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this tenth day of December 2024.
Okay, can I have the gavel back?
Gavel back.
Okay. Let me see if I can get myself together. We will, that was the, we have one more agenda item, and I hope that you will all be willing to go next door where we're going to do the swearing-in ceremony. Did I have that correct? And then, oh, and so we should, you're right. Do we need comments on this, actually? Okay, so we'll take public comment here. So if you would like to make a public comment before we So, if you would like to make a public comment before we go over and swear everybody, and our media will be adjourned at the end of that swearing-in ceremony, please make your public comment now. So, any public comment online?
We have no online public comment per item thirty-one.
Okay, let me quickly ask, any supervisor announcements before we leave this daisies?
Cool, yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Hubbard.
Just really quickly, the Sierra Nevada Council, I was on the Zoom call with you the other day, I believe it was the fourth, thank you, very interesting, and thank you for your leadership on that as well, and just to say that we had some really awesome Christmas parades.
We did, we did.
That's it.
Supervisor Follnour.
Last week, with Supervisor Toffenelli, I attended the CAG and CTA, the CTA board blessed and gave feedback, their design for the new CTA building. And also last night, Supervisor Toffenelli and I attended the Wagon Trail Town Hall, along with staff, public works staff, and it was well-attended, and a lot of feedback on that, and we're hoping to keep that communication open with the community going forward. So, thank you, staff, for putting that on last night.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
She reported everything for me, so, thank you.
Supervisor Toff.
Just something for the board to keep in mind, CSAC, with Jeff being president this year from the Rural Counties, and Ryan Campbell that we got on from legislative over there, and they, I pretty much have my choice of legislative committees that they would like me to get on, so if there's any interest on legislation, let me know, because I can't take them all on, let's prioritize and go from there.
It's really important, Ben, thank you. Madam CEO.
I just want to say thank you, Jack. You've been very welcoming, and I love your enthusiasm and your passion for representing District Two, and really, all of Calaveras County, so thank you, and I know you're going on to do other great things for the county as well.
Thank you, Teresa. Madam Counsel?
Nothing but congratulations, Jack.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I will echo that as well, especially for the last four years, for your guidance and all the board members' guidance and welcoming of me to this, being the deputy clerk. And also, just to re-echo what Supervisor Hubbard said, that you and Supervisor Huberty will be recognizing the Six Centennials at Foothill Village on Monday next week.
Which is, which is going to be awesome, and now there's one person that said in every single meeting I've been in, Susan, would you like to say anything before we depart? Any announcements?
I have a CCTV pen for you.
Susan, I've enjoyed work with you.
We're signing off.
Very well, well then, with no further ado, if you will join us next door, we could swear in these wonderful new people and move forward, so thank you.